I'd like to go ahead and call to order, please. Everybody please stand, we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
Any more roll call, please?
Councilmember Bader.
Present.
Councilmember Hicks.
Present.
Councilmember Frye.
Present.
Councilmember Tanner.
Present.
Councilmember Koenig.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Farmer, present. Mayor Householder.
Present. We have a forum. The next one is approval of the agenda.
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Agenda approved. Next one is approval of city council minutes. Yep, for regular meeting held on April 20, 2015.
I'll make the motion that we approve the April 20. I'll say it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Minutes approved. The next one is approval accounts payable and payroll.
Okay, I make the motion that we approve accounts payable a total of forty-five thousand, three hundred and one dollars and sixty-four cents and payroll in the amount of ten thousand, eight hundred, sixty-six dollars and eighteen cents for a total of fifty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents.
And I support.
Any more discussion, hon? Game and roll call, please.
Yes, councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Okay, councilmember Hicks.
Yes.
Member Frye.
Yes.
Councilmember Koenig.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanner.
Yes.
Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry, mayor pro tem farmer, yes. And mayor householder.
Yes. Motion approved. Next one going down the list is other regular business, resolutions, proclamations, reports, and presentations. At this time, I'd like to present the keys to the Bangor royalty. Come on up. Tonight, we have Caitlin Wooder and we also have Casey Burrows. Absent tonight is Noah Shine. So I'd like to congratulate Caitlin, congratulations, Casey. And as mayor, we'd like to offer you approval to the city. There you go. There you go again. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you. Also, I'd like to announce that Noah Shine is absent tonight and he is representing Bangor. He is first runner-up to Blossom Time. So congratulations to Noah. The city council, I mean, the royalty, I also asked the city council members to stay over tonight so I can get some pictures with everybody here from city council. Thank you very much. Going down the list is number eight, opportunity for comments. Please state your name and keep your comments within three minutes. Okay. Moving down the list, we have some unfinished business. A, ethics violation. Regina?
I have an update on that. It was not done when it was supposed to be because there was a second contact that was needed with Mr. Bornet and so that took a little time. That has been completed. The report is drafted and will be done midweek. So we should have that by the next meeting. Winkle Tower, I'll scroll down through here. Winkle Tower, Brian has a tentative meeting with Mr. Winkle this Wednesday at one o'clock. Seber Tans, they started April 27th working on the general ledger. They've managed to complete June of 2014 so far. All the electronic type of transactions have not been entered in the system at all. So they're having a little bit of a struggle with it. Police Department Building, Chuck Martin, One and Bannan Construction look at the building for bids. He's planning on bringing Andy Potts and Van Damme and Cruising done next. We've purchased enough blueprints for each contractor to have so everyone is on the same page with the bids. I did locate a 2010 asbestos report and there's no sense in doing this over again. I did contact this company, talked to them there and he said he's gonna set up a time to come look at the building and he will take care of bidding it out and he also knows of some companies that can help with the lead paint testing. So we'll move forward on that one finally. And PCI negotiations, I just didn't get that done.
The next thing was new business. We didn't have anything on the agenda this time, new business. Moving down the list is going back to number 11, opportunity for public comments. Please state your name, keep your comments within three minutes. Alrighty, next one is board commissions, appointments, and correspondence. We don't have anything to connect, do we? Okay, let's go down the list. We have city council member comments. Dan?
Okay. A long time ago, when I was in the business world of California, I heard that if you want to ruin somebody's reputation or ruin somebody's career, you yell in deselma. And I find that a very, very sad way to do business. I did then and I still do. After seeing the papers the last week, watching television commercials, I'm gonna say it's a sad state of affairs. And two, the election tomorrow is hanging over the City of Bangor's head. When everybody knows what's going on, ask a lot of stupid questions. Am I placing business? And I'm sorry, but I very disagree. As the mayor of Bangor, I know you're the kind of person to go out, make comments, do your speech. But by no way, I must say, did you ever discuss anything with me? Did you ever bring anything to my attention? Did you even bother calling me? So therefore, I must say, I'm very offended, but I think you had a call for your resignation. That's all I got.
Fred?
I'd like to kind of reiterate some of the things that Dan just said. I don't, the players will change in this council. Here at some point, Dan's not gonna be here, Harold's not gonna be here. This will change. The only constant that we have here is the city. All this negative publicity doesn't hurt anybody but the city. And I think we need to keep that in mind because as long as we keep moving forward and we keep getting this negative publicity, we're never gonna get anybody to come to our city. And that's what we need. We need people to come here to increase our tax base so we can start building up our revenue and, you know, we may have made some decisions that weren't popular with the community. But I'll reassure you as from my point of view, that every decision I make is thought out and it's an educated decision and I make it on the best with the information that's given to me. The best possible decision I could make. So if there's any accusations of anybody trying to do anything sneaky behind or we're letting people go or doing things wrong to people because they're let go, I take offense to that personally because that's not how I do my business. So I do mine by making a decision that's fair and that makes sense. So I'm looking out for the best interest of the city and that's where I'm at. So I don't know what else I can say, but hopefully everybody will get out and vote tomorrow and we'll have a good, that's all I have.
Fred?
Okay. Trying to say something positive here. Ever day, we planted an apple tree in Northside. Now we, this coming weekend, we've got Train Day coming up. And these are two really neat things that happen here in Bangor and we ought to be talking about some of the good things that are going on in Bangor instead of all this stuff. That's all I have to say.
Jim?
I basically concur with what Fred had to say. I think my whole interest is to be upfront and be transparent with the city and I think that we, we're not perfect, but I think everything that we're doing, we're moving forward for the city and, and this is, this is something that I've pulled in life as, as in all my careers is to represent and do the best I can to represent people and represent the position that I have been honored to be voted into support. So I just feel that everything that's taking place right now, we are doing things that will be positive. People has a right to know where and how they have been supported. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Luke?
Well, I wish that there was a way to work out some of the things that have happened in the past without bringing them up. It's my understanding for a long time, this investigation's been going on and it hasn't been brought out into the public until there's a lot more information. But the bottom line is, if the money's not right, the money's not right. And if it happened, it happened and you can pretend it didn't happen, you can sugarcoat it, whatever, but I think it's irresponsible to pretend it didn't happen. If the money's, and it's not where it should be, we need to know where it is and, and hold the people accountable. Aside from that, on a positive note, I talked with the police chief earlier today. She is working on getting the new car. I think you guys turned in the paperwork for that. So any day now, we should be getting a new police car, which would be awesome. We also talked about the new officers. How many officers do we have currently now?
Four.
So I think she's getting that straightened out. That's a positive. We need to get our police department back to where it needed to be and she's working hard on that and I think here, very shortly, we'll be back up to where we need to be and hopefully in a new building. Other than that.
Thank you.
Come to Train Day, May night, the depot.
Lynn?
I would like to say welcome to the royalty. Thank you for coming. We're really pleased that you represent our town and we know that you guys will represent us well. And like I told you, Caitlin, your reign will go by quickly, so enjoy every minute of it and we're really glad that you're representing our community. Also, I am encouraging everybody to do Train Day and also for the people that don't know, the Historical Society last weekend, went out on Saturday, we worked for four hours. We straightened twenty-five graves and we, and we refixed, or whatever, six gravestones that were in pieces. So we're planning on having another day, so we worked four hours. Only one person out there who was sitting next to a tree felt the earthquake, so the rest of us, I guess, were too busy using our shovels and moving stones. So we hope to continue to do that so that we can really make our cemetery a nice place to be. And also, for the people who have not noticed, there are three new signs out there, Todd, thank you to you guys for that, that are placed at the entrances of the cemetery stating our cemetery rules. So there's no question when flowers moved or that type of thing. So they're out there, they're up, they look lovely and thank you very much to PCI for getting those up. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Lynn. National Train Day, remember the Amtrak times will change, so they're gonna start celebrating around seven. I believe the train should be coming in about 7:30 on Saturday. So we welcome everybody down to the Train Depot. They will typically have some type of little band going on. That's how they had it last year. I would assume they have it this year. They'll open up some other places, have a few events in town. So we welcome everybody to come out to the National Train Day this Saturday. And we are the smallest city in the United States that have a train stop. So that's something we can have a little pride in for the city of Bangor. The other accusations. The, the other thing is too, like I said, those who have been interviewed by the FBI know it. It's not allowed to come out to say who they are or what's going on. It is an FBI investigation. And what they need to do, you know, like I said, to show the money, show where the money's accounted for and where it's at and that's all we're asking. If you look back at some of our audit reports, just pull them up, look at the last few pages. They'll come out and tell you straight up some inadequacy, inadequacy policies of, of our audit reports, what their findings were. I encourage you guys going to Michigan. I encourage you guys going to Michigan.gov slash Treasury, look up the city of Bangor, it's there. Alrighty? Be your own judge, it's facts and data. And I know this, uh, city manager next to me, she is working on policies, procedures that we should not keep reduplicating these issues of these same findings year after year after year after year. Okay? So like I said, come on out on Saturday, we welcome you all to come out, have a great time. Thank you very much. Uh, the next thing is, can I get a, in the meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carried. Carried.